I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. The Planning Board members that are here today are Sidney Franklin, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, Michael Pate, Jorge Sotolongo, Dave Rosacher is the Vice Chair, and I am Greg Rosenbaum, Chairman. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, Current Planning Manager, Jennifer Taylor of the City Law Department, and Kathy Epperson is our Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases have been recommended for layover, have already been heard, or are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial. Therefore, they will be read and voted on without the opportunity for you to state your opinion on this case. If you wish to have this case discussed during this hearing, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. To do so, when each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed for discussion. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard after we vote on the cases that remained on consent. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant. After the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us, and in the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to ten minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information, and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well to the rest of the public. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder in this room. With that said, we're going to get started with the reading of the consent cases. Again, just to remind you, if a case is on for consent, if it's on for approval, or nothing more will be taken today for that case. If it's on for layover, it'll be laid over for a later meeting, either a month from now or several months from now. If you're here and you want to discuss that case, you'll have to stand up and let me know, and we'll take it off of the consent agenda. So I'm going to get ready to go with Agenda Item Number Four, Case C-10-24-112, C-11-24-113. Applicant: Foundations Development. It is on consent for approval. Request approval of a planned unit redevelopment overlay district along with a repeal of the PK overlay for a portion of the site. This was laid over from our April meeting. Location: Southwest of 22nd Street in Poppleton Ave. Anyone wish to have this case removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Five, Case C-8-24-94, C-10-15-246. Applicant: Shelter Belt Theater. It is on for approval. Request approval of a special use permit to allow indoor entertainment in the GI District along with a major amendment to a parking adjustment for a mixed-use development. This was also laid over from our April meeting. Location: 4383 Nicholas Street, Unit 204. Anyone wish to have this removed? Seeing none. Agenda Item Number Eight, Case C-7-24-108, C-10-24-107. Applicant: Todd Adams. It is on for approval. Request approval of a conditional use permit to allow indoor sports and recreation in the CC District with approval of the Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. This was laid over from our April meeting. Location: 5121 North 132nd Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Ten, Case C-10-16-289, C-12-16-290. Applicant: R&amp;R Real Estate Investors, II LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Final plat approval of Fountain Ridge East, formerly Fountain West Office Park Lots Two and Three, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to MU along with approval of a major amendment to the Mixed Use Development Agreement for Fountain Ridge East. Location: North of 188th and Burke Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Eleven, Case C-10-24-119, C-10-24-120. Applicant: Adriano DeSantis. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from GC and R7 to CC along with a repeal of the PK overlay for a portion of the site. Property is located within an ACI Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. Location: 4358 Dodd Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twelve, Case C-10-24-123. Applicant: Tessa Dominguez. It is on for approval. Request: Rezoning from GC to R6. Location: 6055 Country Club Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, Agenda Item Number Twelve will be removed. Agenda Item Number Thirteen, Case C-10-24-131. Applicant: Levin Wealth, Capital LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of the Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location: 7300 Graceland Drive. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Case C-8-24-121. Applicant: American Tower LLC. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow a broadcast tower in the CC District with a waiver to Section 55366 Height to allow a 105-foot-tall tower. Location: 14210 Arbor Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, Case C-8-24-122. Applicant: Timothy Nelson. It is on for consent for approval. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow general retail sales in the GI District. Location: 4356 South 87th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Seventeen, Case C-8-24-125. Applicant: Omaha Cellular Telephone Company. On for approval. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow a broadcast tower in the DR District with a waiver to Section 5510-108 Height to allow a 133-foot-tall tower. Property is located within the Flood Fringe Overlay District. Location: Northeast of 258th Plaza and West Center Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Nineteen, Case C-8-24-130. Applicant: Bill Alfred. It is on consent for approval. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow automotive rentals in the CC District. Property is located within a Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. Location: 3434 South 84th Street. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty-two, Case C-14-24-128. Applicant: Property Owner. It is on for approval. Request: Approval of the vacation of the east-west alley between Hickory Street and William Street from 11th Street to its eastern terminus. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Those were the approval consent items on for approval. We're moving to the consent layover items. Agenda Item Number Two, Case C-12-24-104. Applicant: Joe Visner. It is on for layover. Request: Preliminary and final plat approval of Spring Grove RV Park, a minor plat outside city limits with approval of a waiver to Section 5399 Sidewalks and Section 5393 Street Surfacing. Property is located within the Flood Way Overlay District. This was laid over from our April meeting. Location: Southeast of 234th Street and West Center Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Three, Case C-12-23-170. Applicant: Keith Edquist. It is on for layover. Request: Preliminary plat approval of Stargrass Acres, formerly Northern Hills Estates IV, a subdivision outside city limits with a waiver to Section 5399 Sidewalks. This was laid over from our July 2023 meeting. Location: 6820 Northern Hills Drive. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Six, Case C-8-23-182. Applicant: Keith Edquist. It is on for layover. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow development in the ED North Hills Environmental Resource Overlay District. This was also laid over from our July 2023 meeting. Location: 6820 Northern Hills Drive. Anyone wish to have this removed? You do so? Okay, so we'll take Three and Six both off of the Agenda, Consent Agenda. Agenda Item Number Seven, Case C-7-24-105. Applicant: Joe Visner. It is on for layover. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow campground in the AG District. Property is located within the Flood Way Overlay District. Laid over from our April meeting. Location: Southeast of 234th Street and West Center Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Nine, Case C-3-24-132, C-10-24-97, C-12-24-98. Applicant: Bennington Public Schools. It is on for layover. Request: Preliminary plat approval of Military 180 Crossing, a subdivision outside city limits with rezoning from AG to R4 along with approval of a waiver to the PDZ Present Development Zone. Location: Northeast of 180th Street Military Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. Agenda Item Number Twenty, Case C-7-24-96. Applicant: Bennington Public Schools. It is on for layover. Request: Approval of a conditional use permit to allow secondary educational facilities in the R4 District with a waiver to Section 55-186 Height to allow a 50-foot-tall building. Location: Northeast of 180th Street Military Road. Anyone wish to have this removed? Okay, seeing none. For the Agenda Items that were left on consent for approval, do we have a motion?
Motion approved. Case numbers four, five, eight, ten, eleven, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, nineteen, and twenty-two.
We have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Okay, before we move on to those consent cases that were taken off the Agenda, all those cases I just read, if they were on for approval or layover, there'll be no...
We did run on layover yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. There'll be no further action, let me take a motion for layover. Do you have a motion for the layover cases?
Motion to layover cases two, seven, nine, and twenty.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rose Hacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Sorry about that, I got ahead of myself. So, all those cases that were left on consent for approval or layover, no further action will be taken today. We appreciate you coming down, and you're welcome to stay, or you are free to leave, so... We'll continue on with Cases Three and Six that were... I was just going to go in numerical order. Do a twelve, you went twelve first. Okay. We'll continue on with Cases Three and Six that were on for layover. They were taken off of the consent agenda. Case C-12-23-170. Applicant: Keith Edquist. Request: Preliminary plat approval of Stargrass Acres, formerly Northern Hills Estates IV, a subdivision outside city limits with a waiver to Section 5399 Sidewalks. Location: 6820 Northern Hills Drive. And number six goes along with it, Case C-8-23-182. Applicant: Keith Edquist. Request: Approval of a special use permit to allow development in the ED North Hills Environmental Resources Overlay District. Location: 6820 Northern Hills Drive. And may we hear from the applicant, if the applicant's here.
Elizabeth Hunter, 11850 Nicholas, Omaha. There are some things, as you know from the reports that came from Planning Board, that we are still working with Public Works and Planning on for the project, and so we would like for this to just continue on to the layover. I'll just show the map here. Everyone familiar with where this is? The site is here. Down on the south is Northern Hills Drive. Over to the west, a little bit further than the map shows here, is... Oops, sorry, this is upside down. Uh, sorry. And does it auto-focus?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
There you go.
All right, sorry, Northern Hills Drive down here. Then, off to the west, over here, a little bit further than the map, is 72nd Street. So, we've been working with planning and Public Works since last July on some options to not have a through street, because that was one of the complaints that the neighborhood had, and we have come to the conclusion based on information from the Northern Hills Overlay requirements for all of the tree removal and replacement that would be required, that it would be a really tough go for the road to the north to extend from Keith's property. Let's see here, two. So this is the layout that we're looking at now. Previously, the road continued on up to the north this way. And so, also, this cul-de-sac road to the north is now going to be a private road so that Keith can have more control over the development than he previously would have with all the covenants and things that he has set up through the homeowners' association. This is sort of a villa concept now, where each homeowner would be paying into the homeowners' association and all the care for the whole development, including snow removal, mowing, and all of that, and the rain gardens, because we are doing rain gardens on the lots and not on easements, and so that's one of the things that we've been working with Public Works on since last summer. So that is a different change on the care of these. So, the way that we have the covenants written now is that the easement will be over the whole lot so that the city can come in and do maintenance if it's not being maintained properly, but it will... The responsibility for the maintenance ties back to the homeowner and then to the homeowners' association, so that it is not really the homeowner's responsibility, it is the homeowners' association's responsibility for the care and maintenance of those. Then, to the south of that north leg, we have a road here that is called Stargrass Road that connects to an existing road here at Ponca Hills Estates, and then would connect to a road that still needs to be built that is over in the development that is for the Volunteer Fire Department for Irvington, called Smokey Ridge. So, we have worked a lot also with Public Works and Planning on getting an alignment that works for this road here, because the part of the plat that reserves space for this road to be built did not reserve space in a way for the road to be built to code. So, we have... We've done many, many, many options to get something that works and meets code, and meets what the city finds important, and what Keith, the client-owner of the project, finds important. And so, this alignment gives the access that we had been approved for here at Northern Hills, and gives the connection to Stargrass, both at Ponca Hills Estates and over at Smokey Ridge. The city had indicated that that piece, the Stargrass piece connecting those two neighborhoods, was the most important thing to them. They didn't really care about the cul-de-sac to the north, they didn't really care about the leg out to Northern Hills. They wanted the connection between those two neighborhoods, and the road out to Northern Hills is what's important to Keith, the owner. So, trying to put all those puzzle pieces together, we finally have a grading plan that meets all of the requirements for the codes of design for the roads. The crossroad here, this would be a public street, and then this would be a public street connecting down to the road that is existing here in Smokey Ridge. So those are the basics of where we are with all of the design. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them before I sit down.
I just have one quick question for you. So, the Stargrass Lane, the private road, right?
Yes.
Okay, which you'll maintain?
Yes.
Okay, is that going to be concrete?
Yes.
Okay.
But it will be less wide than a normal city street. City streets are required to be 25 feet wide. This one would be 22 feet wide, and it would be a rule section and have a covert-type ditch on the side of the road to collect the water instead of trying to run it all the way down the street and put it into storm inlets. And the purpose of that is, because we want to do the rain gardens and collect the water and infiltrate it, getting it off the road and into these ditches and into the rain gardens works better to have multiple outlets of... From the ditch to the rain garden than just getting it from an inlet that's on the road. So that's what the change would be on the private road.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Elizabeth. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Jason LaFerrier, 7111 Stargrass Road, Assistant Chief Irvington Volunteer Fire Department. The reason I wanted it brought off, Consent Layover, is I've... Keith was instructed to reach out to the Irvington Volunteer Fire Department and propose the new changes, and he did that, and Keith and I met a few weeks ago, and I took the information back to the fire department. Since the fire department own land, it's owned by the membership, and the membership shot the idea down. One of the reasons that we're opposed to the new layout that Elizabeth just shown was the lot that the road now curves into is a sold lot, and they plan on beginning construction this spring. On that home, well, that road kind of comes down and faces where that house will be. So my concern is a safety concern. Somebody coming down that road, Stargrass, runs off the T-intersection part of it, and it's going to be in the living room of that house that's being built. That is a safety concern. The other concern is, you know, when we developed the property, 12 years ago maybe, maybe a little bit longer, you know, we'd worked with city planning and everybody to lay out where Stargrass is dedicated now, and that was under the clear understanding that that's where that road would connect through. So, we'd like to be a little bit more involved, if we could, as landowners, in the design of Keith's neighboring neighborhood, and how it directly impacts our property and the through street, is my request.
So what would you like to see changed, then?
I... Well, I don't know that there's a problem with the road, the way it's laid out now. It may not meet code, but that can be graded down to meet code, if that's the ultimate issue.
Yeah, the house you were referring to, is that north or south of Stargrass, the new Stargrass Road that's going to be connecting to your... Or is it west?
So, the new house that's being built that we're concerned with is, it'd be on the southwest corner of that new proposed Stargrass where it kind of curves into 69th Street.
Do we have... Can you give him a copy of... Yeah, you've got one. Can we give him a copy?
Elizabeth, would I be able to borrow that layout you have, real quick?
He's getting one.
Oh.
There you go.
So, this lot right here is the one... This lot right here is the one that's going to be built on, starting in the spring, and the property owners are actually here with us today. That road now kind of directly faces where the building... That road now kind of directly faces where the building envelope on that lot. Now, I don't know if it's going to be living room, bedroom, whatever, but there is concern that car could come right off of that and just be, it's straight downhill into that house. So if that car did happen to go off of that T-intersection, there's no stopping it without, you know, some sort of barrier put on the lot to keep that vehicle from going into that house. So that's just one of the concerns. Here is, you know, the original layout with the road coming up the hill. We're good with that, and if, you know, it needs to be graded down more to meet the slope requirements, you know, we're prepared to handle that.
Okay.
We'd just like to be a little bit more involved in some of the, you know, conversations, if at all possible.
Jason, do you guys have an engineer that you're?
Want to use to be involved in that conversation, if that's possible? And it's difficult because, you know, you've got one property owner and another property owner, so who's coming up with anything on your side? Do you know yet?
We have just recently contracted RW Engineering. We haven't had a time, we haven't had time to really sit down and meet with them on this. We were just given notice on this meeting coming up, so.
Okay.
So I, we have contracted with somebody to start looking into this.
Okay. Thanks. So when you last met with Keith, did you have this conversation with him? You said you met with him since the July, when we looked at this.
Yeah, I met with him a couple of weeks ago up at the fire station. He pretty much proposed the idea. I told him I'd take it back to the membership, but I expressed some concerns to him. And in typical Keith fashion, he was unhappy with it, and I told him that I would take it back to the fire department membership. The membership ultimately voted down that idea, and it's not a me, it's, you know, the Irvington Fire Department. So I conveyed that to him, but that was the last time we had spoke.
So primarily, the objection is just that street that's coming in and the house is being built?
Yeah, the way the new connections laid out.
That's the reason that they decided not to go along?
Yeah. Yeah, we were fine with the way it was originally designed.
I think we're sharing this one. Well, I think the engineer is a good suggestion, and also maybe the general contractor can suggest like some kind of aesthetically pleasing bollard, like, you know, traffic safety bollard with some landscaping that can protect the house. Is one another suggestion offered to the homeowners?
On the property itself or up at the, on the road and the road right away?
That would be a good suggestion to get from the engineer or the general contractor either, but I was envisioning the property itself, something that protects the house.
Well, I'd hate to lose somebody, you know, that on that, that's committed to that lot that they'd say, because it's a member of the fire department that's going to build on there, and if they walk away from it because of that road layout, where's that financial hardship fall to?
Well, I think you still could have some conversations about screening, you know, with trees and, you know, whatever options, just, you know, that's just for conversation.
Right.
If you wanted to try and resolve or find a solution to it. I mean, there's some options for you to still talk about, I think.
So, but I'd like to, I just wanted to bring this to you guys' attention.
Sure.
That there had been conversations, we've had, we were starting to take appropriate steps, but just so you guys are in the know as far as communication-wise.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Jason.
Jason, any other opponents? Seeing none, none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Eric, did you want to?
Yeah, I guess I'd probably ask.
I, hold on, I'm sorry, Eric. I'm out of sorts today. Elizabeth, did you want to come up and say anything?
I don't know if this thing will go back to showing on its own or if I need to do something. Oh, there you go. Upside down again. Okay. So we have run so many different options for this road as it's platted right now. And I would love to see what RW can come up with that would meet code and still meet code in the connection that needs to be made to the other roads that the city wants to see. So, you know, we already knew we were going to be laid over, and so I would ask that they get their engineer working on this so that we can have that conversation about it, you know, before the next hearing for the changes that we had made between this area that is currently platted, which is this pink right here, to what is shown in green right here. Keith did offer, when he spoke with Jason at that meeting, that he would pay for the replating costs, and we've already resized the lot to know that it's still over one acre and would still, you know, be able to be a buildable lot. As for the safety concerns, I mean, there are end-of-road indicators that are used all over the place at end-of roads and, you know, putting, planting or landscaping behind them so that the house down below wouldn't see them. I mean, that happens all the time everywhere at different locations. So I definitely think that the issue about, you know, running off the road or making it an intersection that is dangerous, I mean, those are things that we've definitely been looking at with the city for why we want to meet code, for the safety reasons and the stopping site distances and all those kinds of things. So I guess that's it for now. I mean, we're ready to talk further about it next month and would hope that we can get some information from the fire department in a timely manner that won't impede this from moving forward.
Thank Elizabeth. Eric?
Yeah, I'm going to call Ryan Haas up from Public Works. He's been more involved in the conversations, and, you know, Ryan is part of the traffic division, can answer some of the questions or ideas brought up here in detail, but then also recognizing Ryan's not part of the design division, so I think he'll do his best to summarize accordingly.
Ryan Haas of the Public Works Department. It's good to hear that there's some willingness on the party of the Smokey Ridge development to participate in some coordination now. That's one, that's probably the best way to resolve the street connection, to get it all done in a way that works for both parties. So we would certainly encourage that coordination to continue, and as long as these street connections are made, you know, we know where Point A and Point B are, and as long as they're made in a way that complies with city design requirements, that's going to be, that's going to satisfy the city's recommendations for this plat, and we'll tie up the, and kind of put to rest the requirements that were identified in the original Smokey Ridge subdivision agreement that are still outstanding. So we would certainly, again, just encourage that coordination to continue, to arrive at a solution, whether it's the one presented today or a different one that also meets city code. That's, there's that flexibility on our end of things.
Ryan, a follow-up. I think in the past I heard maybe your department indicate that you did not believe the location of the unimproved right-of-way in Smokey Ridge. You believe that it was not feasible to meet the criteria, or I don't know if you're willing to say that.
I think part of that was we assumed no participation from Smokey Ridge, because at the time that was the indication that we had. So with no opportunity to make any grading changes west of the subdivision we're looking at today, that was the challenge. So I don't know if that's something that the applicant's engineers evaluated, if there's a willingness to allow grading to occur. Maybe the rights of ways they currently exist now become feasible. I don't know that, but we can certainly have those conversations.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Any addition?
Yeah. You know, I don't have too much to add, obviously, you know, working out the street network and location, and we want, it would be most beneficial if all parties can come to an acceptable alignment and solution. So looking forward to, you know, those conversations. Of course, the city can be a part of those, both planning and public works, in any way that we can help facilitate the proposed development along with the neighboring property. So that, along with the post-construction stormwater management plans, sound like there's making some improvements on that. So just for item three, staff recommends layover.
Do we have a motion for item three?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
For agenda item six, staff recommends layover.
For agenda item number six, do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Pete?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Okay.
Agenda item number 12 was on for approval. It is case C-10-24-123. Applicant, Tessa Dominguez, request rezoning from GC to R6. Location, 6055 Country Club Road. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Tessa Dominguez, sorry. Tessa Dominguez with the Mental Health Association of Nebraska, 1645 N Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68508. I guess, I'm not sure that you guys probably want to rehear all of our programming plans at this hearing since this was for the rezoning, but please let me know if that is what you'd like to hear from us today. Okay. So this is, this hearing is for the rezoning, at your guys' request from the commercial zoning, from the GC to an R6 rezoning. That was to meet the request of the planning board. As far as programming, I won't rehash everything. We did come to a couple of different changes that we could make with our previous programming plan that we submitted, which more relates to the special use permit, which will be heard at city council later this month. The one change would be there was a concern about accepting people on the sex offender registry, that population living in this house with a proximity to the schools. I did get permission from our board to change that, to be a part of our programming plan to no longer accept that population at this house specifically. So I guess I will add that. I'm not sure that there is really much else to add. I'm sure we'll probably hear some other things, and I can respond to those questions at that time.
Thanks, Tessa. Tessa, real quick.
Yes.
You made a very important statement.
Yeah.
You're no longer. You're going to accept anybody that's on the sex registry list or sex offenders? What specifically, in detail? Anybody that's been accused of a crime or convicted of a sexual?
Conducted.
Okay.
Yep, that is correct. We are going to change that part of our programming plan for this house specifically because of the proximity of the school. And I have board approval from our organization to make that programming plan change.
And they formally have approved that?
Yes.
In policy?
Yes. Yeah. So I don't, I mean, I could resubmit something for you guys if you'd like to see that, and maybe that would be, again, something more for city council since we've already had the approval from this board.
That would be a matter for city council.
Yeah.
At that public hearing and vote.
Yeah.
The board here is just for the rezoning.
For the rezoning.
Which was a condition of that, but.
Yeah.
So they're related, but not entirely related.
But not, exactly, yeah. So that's why I didn't want to rehash everything today. This is specifically just for the rezoning. As far as the other conditions, we did also resubmit a plan that showed where we would have new trees put in. That was another thing that was asked of us, so we've got that submitted as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents?
Thank you all for your time. My name is Paul Culkmann, and I apologize for my scrub attire, but I had to rearrange clinic and operating to be here today, which is something.
Paul, we need your address.
Yes, sir. 7820 Fairway Drive, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you.
It's something I don't take lightly, having to do that, but this matter involves children, and that to me is a grave concern. As a father of four who lives right around the corner from this area, I was shocked that anybody would think it's a great idea to put a halfway house across from a school. In fact, when I bring it up to anybody else, they say, is that even legal? Apparently it is. They say, is that, that's a terrible idea, and I couldn't agree more when this group has a recidivism rate of their own of around 20%. That's one in five. This house is going to house about eight felons. You can do the math. There will be felonies committed immediately around children. Normally, if you could stop a crime around children, you'd be deemed a hero. Unfortunately, that hasn't happened yet, but I believe you all were sold a bill of lies. This group claims they have a great program, and while 20% might be a lower recidivism rate than the average, that's still not great.
Paul, if I may, real quick, the agenda item today is for rezoning. It's not about the operation of the proposed facility.
I understand that, and this comes down to it, and this is all background since I wasn't able to be here before, because many neighbors, they said, were notified. They were never notified before. The, this group also said that neighbors are in favor of this. Here's a petition with 210 neighbors signing saying they're against this. They lied to you. They said the school was in favor of this. The school took no such stance. They said nothing can be done to stop this with a smirk on their face at the neighborhood meeting. Apparently, they were right so far, but hopefully that turns out to be a lie. And while this may, while they may say, no one on the sex offender list, okay, so do we want violent criminals next to children, drug traffickers, robbers? Who thinks that's a great idea that has children? They won't offer commitment on who will actually be there other than a sex offender list. And so I'm guessing many of you have children, grandchildren, and probably wouldn't want them living next door to them either. My request is simple. You asked for a condition of rezoning on this? Deny that condition because we're talking about, and side with innocent children instead of the felons who will be occupying this house and a group that has proven to do nothing but lie to you all so far.
Okay. Thank you, Paul.
Thanks.
Any other opponents wishing to speak? And remember, folks, we're here for a zoning application.
And just for the benefit of the board and the crowd, the previous submittal for the special use permit for transitional living, that is allowed with the proposed R6 district with a special use permit, just as it is allowed with the special use permit in the general commercial district. Any denial of the rezoning today does not impact the application that'll be heard before city council on May 14th. So I just want to make sure that's clear.
Okay. I really don't have that much to say, but I love that 60, oh, I'm sorry.
Name and name and address.
Wilda Adams.
Wilda?
Yes.
Thank you.
6017 Country Club Road. I'll be next door to this property, and I plainly don't want it, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Wilda. Any other opponents?
So just so I understand that, this is being rezoned to R6 just to clean up the zoning right there, but it has nothing to do with whether or not this will operate? Okay.
Yes, that is correct, and.
It was just a condition of that approval to get it cleaned, get the zoning cleaned up?
Yeah, the commercial zoning is not appropriate for the neighborhood. It's not in compliance with the master plan.
Right.
So this was an opportunity to clean up the zoning, to be more in conformance with the neighborhood as well as the master plan designation.
Thank you.
Eric, are we correct, this goes on to the city council on May 14?
This rezoning will not. There.
The previous request.
The previous request for the special use permit is scheduled for May 14th, I believe is the date.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Tessa.
Lawrence Culkmann. My address, 6825 Country Club Road. I think those of us that came felt that the zoning was important, and if the zoning changed, then the property couldn't be used for what it is. So I'll try not to repeat some things, but I do want this body to know that in your approval of it the last time, you need to follow the money. I was a banker, I've seen these things 100 times, probably 1,000. And the money is that a realtor had a house to sell. had a house to sell. And that he, to get his commission, he had to get it sold. It was on the market for two years. So he couldn't get it done. He found an agency to buy it, who gets money. A big contract with the Department of Prisons to reduce their prison population, and stick them in a neighborhood. There's no facilities around there of any kind. The state has pushed this down into the neighborhoods by doing this kind of thing, and put our neighborhood at risk with these people. And the recidivism rate is there, the school's there, Nathan Hill School's there, there's another grade school, there's Ron Colly High School. And if the zoning doesn't change what you approved last time, I sincerely wish you'd have a motion and withdraw your last approval, because to go to the city council and argue, which we will, is ridiculous. And the thing I think that's most angering to me, is that there was some collaboration, I believe, with the city planning commission, because I, it wasn't lost on me that your committee, your planning director was up there joking and laughing with these ladies when the vote was taken last time.
Lawrence, let's, let's just leave it on, talk about the zoning-
Well, but, okay. It was hurtful to me to see that.
The request for a special use permit was passed last time.
Yes, okay.
You got up and spoke.
And you denied me a second chance to speak.
And we're going to move it on to the, it moves on, that request, special use permit moves to the city council, May 14th.
Okay, well-
Today's argument is on the zoning, which does not change-
Well, if the zoning doesn't change that, you know, we probably spent some time we didn't need to spend, but I want you to know that you've been completely misinformed by this lady about that, and you voted on false information that we didn't have at the time. That they misrepresented the public meeting, they misrepresented the putting out of where the flyers were put out, they put it out in a marginalized neighborhood. You were misinformed about people's acceptance, and I just, you know, I'm sorry if I took up your time. Thank you.
That's just an argument you need to make at the-
I, I will make that known, and we have the numbers and people to prove it.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
All right. Any other opponents? Again, this is about the zoning and-
Understood.
You'll have the opportunity at the city council, if you have-
Yep, understood.
-anything other than the zoning.
Yeah, no, understood. Yep, just wanted to come up here. Scott Gordon.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yep, Scott Gordon, 6052 Country Club Road, right across the street from the proposed site. We purchased our property in 2017 and had to have it rezoned. And, you know, our whole thought in this area is, you know, we, we love our neighbors, our neighborhood, and the master plan to get it into a residential, I think, is appropriate, but I don't think it's, the master plan to install a transitory house is a good use of that space. So just make that your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Any other opponents?
Hello, I'm Mike Mapes, and I live at 6022 Country Club Oaks Place, just a couple blocks away from the property in question. And there's 33 homes in our neighborhood, and not a single person in our neighborhood is for anything that would help allow this property to change to what they're suggesting to do right now. It's a, it's a neighborhood. We want to keep it a neighborhood. And to allow businesses to come in, then what would be next? And so, anything we can do to keep it a neighborhood, we would greatly appreciate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any other opponents?
No. My name's Bob Moreford, 6052 Country Club. I'm concerned with parking. They have a driveway. How many cars are they going to have there? Also, sidewalk, storm sewer? You know, when we bought our property, there was talk of rezoning to, from commercial to residential, and there was talk of, we had to get sidewalk, curb and gutter parking, off-street parking. Just wondering if the same goes for these people?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Any other opponents?
Tao Morris, 7005 Iowa Street.
What was your first name again?
Tao.
Okay, thank you.
I have been in this community, of this neighborhood, for the last 25 years. I have kids that go to Springville, and also kids that go to Nathan Hill. And my main concern with this plan is safety. And I hope that the board will reconsider the zoning, because we want to retain the safety. There are many children that walk home after school, directly adjacent to this home. The nearest bus stop that I assume that many of these residents will be using is at least half a mile away. So there will be a lot of walking involved. So we want to retain the safety in this community. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Tao. Any other opponents? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Tessa, did you want to come up and say anything more?
Sure.
Okay.
I'll try to, sorry, Tessa Dominguez, with the Mental Health Association, 1645 N Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68508. I'll try to just touch on a couple of things quickly, just to not waste your guys' time here. As far as parking goes, that, like, we do have the correct number of parking. I believe that was already looked at and approved by the, by the planning board. Sidewalks is another thing that we talked about with the planning board, and looking towards finding the funding to have those put in. In regards to collaborating with the planning department, I would highly suggest that you educate yourself on the process for applying for a special use permit. There, there, like, the process asks that we have those meetings ahead of time, as part of the application process. And then, in regards to any lies that were told to you guys, I would also suggest that you go back and watch the recordings of the last hearing, because I don't believe that we came up and said that everybody supported this. But, but yeah, I mean, this is, again, it's just for the rezoning. I think that, that if it stays as commercially zoned, and let's say, we don't keep this property and we sell it, then it is up for commercial development, right, which would also pose some of those other issues that I think that neighbors are concerned about. As far as the population that we serve, people transferring, coming out of the Department of Corrections, they can live anywhere that they want. There's not, there's no laws that say that they can't. They're going to live in neighborhoods. The difference with our program is, is that we are supporting people to develop a strong foundation in that transition process, so that we can reduce those recidivism numbers. And with the 2030 reentry initiative that our governor has signed off on, we are going to see more and more people being released that need this support. So that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Tessa.
Thank you, Tessa. Any additional comments or questions? I was just, before I turn it over to Eric, I just-
Sure.
Sure. I closed the public hearing, but go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, come on forward. You'll have to give your name and address, too.
My name is Kirsten Holmkafsky, and we live at 6038 Country Club Oaks Place. I just have a question. I was on the phone at length with Doug Thompson this morning from the City of Omaha office, and I understand, we went through that this is a zoning thing. The way I understand it is that whether it's residential or commercial, this does not impact them moving forward. Is that true?
I believe.
Yes. The zoning change, whether, whether it says G.C. or R6, that does not impact the special use permit for transitional living on city council, May 14th.
Can I ask the planning committee what the purpose of asking for that contingency from them, and also, what does it have to do with the master plan? What is the master plan?
I will touch on that here in 30 seconds.
Oh, great.
Yep.
And does this, whatever anyone says here, does that get put on record? I feel like, I know you don't want to hear from neighbors about why we don't want it, but the more things you hear on record, is that to anyone's benefit?
It goes on the record for the rezoning case today. It does not go on any record for the special use permit that's already scheduled for May 14th. That already, that record happened at the March planning board meeting in those minutes.
Okay, then I am not stating that I am opposed or for the rezoning. I just had questions, because I can see benefits to both. And if I was told the information correctly, then it doesn't sound like it impacts it one way or the other, and we're, we don't have anything to say about it moving forward. Is that true?
At city council.
Correct.
So right now, this is just zoning, and then-
If this is approved or not approved, they would still have the-
Right. I just want to confirm, and I just want everyone that is concerned to understand-
And we do like to hear from neighbors. It's not like we want to shut anybody down.
No, I understand.
We're just telling them that it's, it's more so for a zoning than, than to deny their business.
No, I understand. I just wanted to be very, very clear on the record what the impact of this meeting is, and what the decision, like, how it will impact moving forward, if it precludes them from pursuing their interests. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Before we hear from Eric, I just wanted to say that I appreciate everybody that came down today. We had an open discussion a month ago about this. Was it a month ago, Tessa, or two months?
I did, too.
Yeah, we had an open discussion. Today's request was about zoning and cleaning up zoning, which will not affect this property, as far, I shouldn't say property, this usage. If I was short with anybody, I apologize. I appreciate everybody coming down, but you'll have the opportunity to go in front of the city council, May 14th, and make your arguments. So I just want that known, and I appreciate everybody that came down today, took time off of work, or time out of your schedule to come down. Eric?
Yeah, so with the existing general commercial zoning designation, there are probably 30 or 40 much more intensive uses than what would be allowed on the majority of the neighborhood, because that would have residential zoning. There are a few properties that have G.C. zoning, this one, one adjacent to it, there's one just a short distance to the east. But for example, with that existing zoning in place right now, somebody could develop this property, many of these by right, just coming in for a building permit, not going through planning board or city council. Those include a cocktail lounge, or a bar, a restaurant. You could have a kennel that allows outdoor dogs. You have auto repair, auto sales. You could have a body shop that does body and fender repair, which is the most intensive body, or the automobile repair that we have in our code. Pawn shop, custom manufacturing, and the list goes on and on. So obviously, when the special use permit came before the planning board, the planning department found it beneficial to try to align with the master plan. There are many components and elements of the master plan. One of those is a, a land use designation, or a future land use designation, which this area is designated for residential. That doesn't mean that every use has to be residential, but it, it aligns with different zoning districts. There's about eight or nine different residential zoning districts, so not every residential district allows the same uses. But, you know, it's not designated for office commercial. I don't know the history, how, how it was zoned G.C. I don't recall those details, but it definitely dates back many years, and it's a little surprising that there already hasn't been something developed that's utilized that general commercial zoning, frankly. There are many people that seek sites for kennels is, is one example, that it's allowed in very few districts, and G.C. does allow that. So it's, it's a bit surprising. But when we reviewed the special use permit for the transitional living, as is customary with several applications, either on this agenda, or any other cases, we tried to bring sites into conformance with the master plan the best that we can, and therefore, it was the recommendation to, to downzone to a more appropriate residential district. So with that being said, the rezoning is in compliance with the master plan, and definitely much more in compliance than the existing commercial zoning. So staff recommends approval.
Any other additional comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yeah, just a quick comment before I vote.
I voted no on the initial special use permit, for a lot of reasons that were brought up today. I'm going to vote yes on this, because I like the rezoning of this compared to what it is now. So that's the only reason I'm voting yes for it. I don't necessarily support the project, but I do support the rezoning on it. So I'll vote yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
I'm in the same vote as Mike Pate. I voted no last time, but I'm voting yes for the rezoning. I think it helps clean up the, the site. So my vote is yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Our next case is administrative only, which means there'll be no opportunity for public hearing. It's agenda item number one, case C-10-16-287, C-12-16-288. Applicant, Jasperstone, 192nd Dodge LLC. Request, final plat approval of Avenue One, Lot 12, a subdivision inside city limits, with rezoning from A.G. to M.U. Location, southwest of 193rd Street and HWS Cleveland Boulevard. Eric?
Yeah, so this is the third phase of the Avenue One development. It's only final plating for one lot, which would be proposed for a daycare on 1.57 acres. There is a mixed-use minor amendment that is currently being reviewed by city staff. There's one small change to the condition number two in the wording, so we'll make sure, if the applicant hasn't already received that, that will touch base with them. But it's related to HWS Cleveland Boulevard, which exists to the west of the site, and making sure the proper dedication for that right of way is, is cleaned up, along with this plating effort. So, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from A.G. to M.U., subject to submittal of an acceptable amendment to the mixed-use agreement prior to city council, and approval of the final plat, subject to the following three conditions prior to forwarding the request to city council.
Any additional comments, questions? Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the rezoning from A.G. to M.U., subject to submittal of an acceptable amendment to the mixed-use agreement prior to forwarding the request onto city council, and approval of the final plat, subject to following, following, prior to forwarding the request on city council, with three conditions outlined in the report.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Kathy, please record the vote.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
We're going to move into the public testimony part of our meeting, the regular agenda. Agenda item number 14, case C-11-21-183. Applicant, Ally Pointer Machado Architecture. Request, approval of a major amendment to the planned unit redevelopment overlay district. Location, 3719 Farnham Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes. Eric Westman, Ally Pointer Machado Architecture, 1516 Cummings Street. I have some things to show you, just for familiarity, because it's been a while. This is a project located in Blackstone, between 37th and 38th Street. So it's a mixed-use project of nine stories with two stories of underground parking, totaling 385 public parking spaces, 161 residential units, and 20,000 square feet of retail space. During the process of design, we had alternate solutions to the materials and screening and facade of the building. There were some materials that were not going to be allowed, based on, you know, some things relative to- relative to longevity of the project and durability, so we went through a process of redesigning and going through the urban design review board to confirm that we are still in compliance. So, I have other things I can show you if needed, but primarily just elevations and renderings, and can answer any questions they have.
Just real quick, so just to clarify, did you say underground parking?
Yes.
So below grade?
Two levels, yes.
Is that what we're looking at here?
There's two, there's two above ground also, sorry.
Okay.
So there's... I didn't mention, I didn't mention the underground.
Apologize, there's, there's a total of four, but we put two underground, so we didn't have six. Yeah, we all agreed we didn't want six, so...
I didn't mention that because the screening and the elevation is the item that was being discussed.
Thanks, Eric.
Yeah, thank you, Eric. Any other proponents wishing to speak?
Jaylon DeGreenslay Development, 3555 Farnham, developer on the project, and just here, here for questions, if you have any.
Okay, thank you, Jay. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Additional comments, questions? Before we hear from Eric, Eric?
Yeah, so obviously, we did a, a quick recap summary, not to the level of detail that went to the urban design review board, but we did look at some of those renderings. So, obviously, the, the history, you know, was approved as a PUR, building permit, and there was an addendum, obviously, a lot of conversations with a lot of different city departments, so we've come to an acceptable design and screening method of the parking garage that's on the second and third floors, generally, ground floor also on the south side of the building, so unless you have any specific questions, Eric would be better to answer architectural questions than me trying to fumble through it anyways, but staff recommends approval of the major amendment to the PUR overlay district, subject to submittal of acceptable plans prior to city council.
Eric, did you have something else you wanted to add, or you're just...
No, I just have other material, if, if there are questions, I have a couple other images and elevations of the building that I can share.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve major amendment to the PUR planned unit redevelopment.
Subject to submittal of acceptable final plans prior to forwarding to city council.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Kathy, please record the vote.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
All right, thank you all.
Thanks, Eric. Thanks, Jay.
Agenda item number 18, case C-8-24-126, applicant Nebraska Land Recycling, request approval of a special use permit to allow scrap and salvage services in the GI District, location 3838 South 108th Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Board members, John Blumenthal, Barrett Homes, 1700 Farnham Street, Omaha, 68102, here on behalf of the applicant, Nebraska Land Recycling LLC. Nebraska Land is going to be one of the users of the Balin, what's currently the Balin Manufacturing Building, Palin Manufacturing Building off of 108th Street, and needs a special use permit to continue its operations as a recycler in town. I've got representative of Nebraska Land here, if you have any operational questions, and otherwise, we're happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, John. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any additional comments, questions? Eric?
Yeah, so, we spent quite a bit of time talking through the, obviously, there was a lot of good information in the, submittal in the report regarding the operations and how it'll be handled, and the materials that will be processed, as well as the, the two waivers of zoning code sections that are being supported regarding the screening, because there is no outdoor material, but obviously, if there will be in the future, it'd require a major amendment to the use permit, and that screening waiver would not be supported in that case, but that is not applied as currently proposed, so supportive of that waiver, as well as the separation, there is a state-owned property to the east that is not used residentially, so a separation distance that is supported. We talked about the provisions of junk dealers in Chapter 30 of the municipal code, how the screening provision does not apply, and then the fingerprinting, telling the applicant to coordinate further with Omaha Police Department, and if that department is acceptable to waiving that section, that is acceptable for the planning department, so the report lays out details on that matter. One other item that we mentioned, I think it's worth just pointing out, is to the north of the site on 108th Street, as you pass over the overpass over Interstate 80, that is no truck route in that direction, so the use permit specifies that trucks entering and exiting the proposed facility, you know, need to go southbound on 108th Street where the rest of the industrial area is, so I just wanted to point that out. Staff recommends approval of the special use permit to allow scrap and salvage services in the GI District, subject to the nine conditions in the recommendation report.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve special use permit to allow scrap and salvage services in the GI District, subject to the nine conditions in the staff report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Kathy, please record the vote.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Do we have a motion? Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Comments, questions from the board? Eric?
Yeah, so, I think that was a good summary that was provided. The request for the major amendment does include a height waiver to account for those, the, the field lights, so outside of that, there's just a small revision on the trees that are needed to be planting along the 72nd Street frontage. So, staff recommends approval of the waiver to Section 55166 to allow 75-foot-tall field lights, approval of the major amendment to the conditional use permit for secondary education facility, subject to the six conditions in the recommendation report.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move approval of a waiver to Section 55166 to allow four 75-foot-tall field lights, and approval of the major amendment to a conditional use permit to allow a secondary education facility in the R3 single-family residential district, medium density, subject to the six conditions outlined in the report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Kathy, please record the vote.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thanks, Eric.
Okay, thanks, guys. Do we have a motion for last month's pre-meeting minutes and public meeting minutes?
I move for the approval of last month's pre-meeting minutes and meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion, second, Kathy, please record the vote.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thanks, Eric.
Okay, thanks, guys. Do we have a motion for last month's pre-meeting minutes and public meeting minutes?
I move for the approval of last month's pre-meeting minutes and meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion, second, Kathy, please record the vote.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Do we have a...
Eric's gonna go, I think Eric's gonna go.
We have a motion to adjourn and a second, Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Do we have a...
There's folks in the...
Eric's gonna go, I think Eric's gonna go. We have a motion to adjourn and a second, Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thanks, Eric. Okay. Thanks, guys. Do we have a motion for last month's pre-meeting minutes and public meeting minutes?
I move for the approval of last month's pre-meeting minutes and meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion, second, Kathy, please record the vote.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Thanks, Eric.
Okay, thanks, guys. Do we have a motion for last month's pre-meeting minutes and public meeting minutes?
I move for the approval of last month's pre-meeting minutes and meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion, second, Kathy, please record the vote.
Rose Sacker?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Sotolongo?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Approved, seven to zero.
Do we have a...
There's folks in the...
Eric's gonna go, I think Eric's gonna go. We have a motion to adjourn and a second, Kathy, please record the vote.
Franklin?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.